Can't make this stuff up. Welcome, everybody. It's dark when we start the meetings, can you believe that?
Yeah.
Terry.
All right. Call to order, City Lawrenceburg Board of Works for November 3rd, 2025, roll call, Mr. Fettie.
Board member Tommy Rillit.
President.
Board member Brett Von Duren.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, I don't have any announcements for this meeting, fellas, unless you do.
I have none, Mayor.
None, sir.
If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got one item on new business tonight, EMS LIT contract. Mr. Wilton?
Yes, Your Honor. With the Board of Public Works and Safety, we have the new EMS LIT contract. Been reviewed by our folks over at Fire Department as proposed by the county. So if it meets the satisfaction of the board, we would vote to approve that and get back to the county.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for those that know more about this than I. On page two, paragraph eight, it used to be sixty percent, now we're ninety percent.
Right.
And the response time used to be five minutes and now it's two minutes.
Uh huh.
Is there a reason for that?
So that is not for us, per se. It's for some other units out in the county that were struggling, so they decided to raise the ante a little bit. On our response rate, because they count second ambulance runs, so, as well, so we're gonna try to work on that as well. But our, generally, our response rate is like ninety-eight percent, so we take, we're at ninety-eight percent of our calls. Ninety-eight point two was the last one. And then the change in the response was, is they were, they were given five minutes from dispatch time for them to respond. Now it's two, which aligns more appropriately with the NFPA standard for fire and EMS response times.
And then on page three, under C and D, that went to ninety percent, but also the response rate below fifty percent of any month, what, what is that all about?
That's, that's saying that you make less than fifty percent of your calls in a month. We're never gonna be there.
It used to be thirty, now they've raised it.
Yep, they, yep, they-
You guys are comfortable with all these?
Where, that, those, those don't affect us whatsoever.
That's the only thing I've seen that I had question. Have you answered that?
Yep.
Any other, any other question? If not, entertain a motion, motion to approve EMS LIT contract for 2026.
So moved.
Second?
All second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Patrick. You bet.
Okay, gentlemen, I don't have any other new or old business for this particular meeting unless you all do.
None, sir.
If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn this particular meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to call to order Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting for November 3rd, 2025, another roll call, Mr. Fettie.
All right, we have it.
Here.
Board member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board member Tommy Rillit.
Present.
Board member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board member Brett Von Duren.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
Utility Director Rob Schneider.
Present.
And myself.
Okay, any announcements from the director this evening?
Um, just wanted to address everybody and kind of send out a reminder that as we're moving into the colder weather, we need to be mindful, our household systems take some precautionary steps to reduce potential costs and damage to the systems like, you know, remember to disconnect any hoses you have on the exterior of your house, turn off those bibs from the inside. If you need any secondary insulation around leaking doors or windows, that can help to prevent unexpected energy costs through the quarter weather. So, um, just wanted to send a reminder out there, everybody stay warm.
So you're not gonna let LMU go out and do that for people, though, huh? Oh, yeah.
That's all you.
That means they're gonna spend less money.
That was your check. That was your money.
Yeah, what are you trying to do? Getting less money in for the utilities?
That's all right.
Who hired this guy?
You did, Mayor.
Yeah, you did. Okay. Hey, thanks, Rob. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we had a, an October 27th work session. I'd like to get the meetings, or the minutes approved for that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, under our new business, we've got bucket truck bids. Who's taking, you taking the lead on that?
Uh, if it pleases Your Honor and Director Schneider, so just to summarize where we are on these bids from legal departments' perspective and to give the utility service board the information they need to make a vote, we're gonna have kind of two potential votes here. So, we have a need for a bucket truck and Eric Webster, the leader of our electric department, started the process of looking for a bucket truck. Through that process, he was able to obtain two quotes that listed specs for what they had to need over there. The two pricing quotes came back at two hundred, about two hundred and sixty thousand for Altech and then, um, over three hundred thousand for the secondary bidder.
Tareks.
JDC.
JDC and Tareks. I think you got the words right, as usual. Where we are with these bids, quotes, whatever you wanna call them, so because these prices came back at a level above one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we rewind time and if we wanted to set things as they are right now, one option, which would be an option for the board to vote today, would be to put these quotes aside and to use these specs that were kind of developed as Mr. Webster talked to these companies, especially Altech, to kind of figure out what we want. So my understanding was the specs were not fully available or we didn't really know exactly what we needed until we started engaging with these companies. The specs were worked out as part of that process and in a perfect world, we would, of course, have our specs exactly. I mean, there's two hundred and some items on this list here. We would have had that beforehand. We would have put that in the newspaper and said, hey, anybody in New Orleans who wants to, you know, give us your prices for a bucket truck, and these are the two hundred and one things we need. But when Mr. Webster was talking to Altech, that's kind of how this go through. And where we are today is Altech, by happenstance, had three bucket trucks that were ordered by another municipal utility. They only ended up taking two of the three, so one of these bucket trucks that matches our specs exactly is available for this price, which you can see is about fifty thousand dollars less than the other quota. And we can have it very quickly. We can have, it's basically available now. So two options, both are perfectly legal, perfectly above board. One would be to say, hey, now, let's just reset, let's get the specs that we kind of learned through this process and take it out to the world for everyone to bid on, including Altech. Altech would bid, and Tareks, the other company would bid as well, anyone could bid. But we would lose the opportunity for this kind of unusual chance to buy this bucket truck. So one of the things we can do, instead of going back out to bids, is we can say, because the residents, citizens, and customers of the utility will experience an unusual cost savings and an unusual time savings, we can vote to, and I'll just put that in the record, that's what I kind of bottomed talking, uh, we can put that in the record, we can vote to do that, and that's perfectly okay. Or we can, like I said, kick it back out. So both options are perfectly fine from the legal department's perspective. I talked to, I met with, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Fettie, Mr. Malone, and, um, I'm not caring on the next thing, but the discuss this beforehand, so fill it to you guys.
Okay, now, also, he went out, as far as I understand, from talking to Mr. Webster, and he went to VersaLift as well, and they did not submit a bid.
Yeah.
So he did try for three, and as long as he can show that he did that word legally done, that's legally done, right?
Well, because it ended up being over a hundred and fifty, we'd actually have to use side seal competitive bids instead of quotes. And that, so-
Okay.
That's why we either need to do it over again or use an exception to the bidding department, which is an unusual cost savings that we can give to our citizens to go ahead and do one that they have available now.
I think to save fifty thousand dollars, our best option is, is to move forward tonight.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's under Indiana Code 5-22-10-1.
Yeah.
It's right in there, so.
Discussion?
I'm, I'm sure we've got some Altech equipment over in that department now, I'm pretty sure, so I'm good with, performing with Altech.
Okay, uh, my understanding then, the, the total for the Altech vehicle will be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, is that correct?
There might have been a certain delivery fee, but let me double check.
I think that's-
They had a delivery fee for two fifteen.
I think the price you gave was included in it.
That includes a seven hundred and fifteen dollar delivery fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'll form this into, into a motion, and you guys can either vote or not, but, um, my motion would be to, and, and Rob, you're okay with this, correct?
I think that's the right move.
Okay. My motion then, on the floor, would be to, um, purchase this bucket truck from Altech at a price to not exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, uh, for two reasons. Number one, a huge cost savings to the ratepayers, but also it gets us access a lot sooner, which our, our bucket truck has a hard time passing the, uh, we call it the certification.
Certification and the engine's out of it right now.
Yep. I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Dale.
Thank you, Your Honor. And then one more item that's not on the agenda, but just kind of all, representing the water department. If you guys remember, a year or so ago, we, Billy King came to us and expressed the need for a dedicated truck. It's operated with what are called exercisers, and I'll scroll it up. But exercisers are basically things that can go around and manipulate the valves in our, in our infrastructure. We do that on a regular basis. That extends the life cycle of these valves. We had kind of a full behind trailer at that time, but it was decided that we would be much better off with a dedicated truck for that end. Billy explained that to us, uh, with Garrett and his guys. Um, we were, we were, got approval for that. It's actually in the budget for this year. We were able to buy the truck. We ordered an arm, I'll call it, for lack of a better term. That ended up not being the best fit for this project.
Right.
And so, um, Garrett was able to find a company that came down, did a demo of an entire add-on to the truck. You know, he determined all the, but, um, they were able to find a solution, come down and demo it. Some of you guys were even there. We went ahead and ordered it. It's actually on its way. It might be here as soon as tomorrow or this week. And so because this is kind of a, this is a continuation of a larger project, because it was kind of approved, but then kind of changed course a little bit, because it's in the budget, again, some of the last time, we can, we can vote, we can say, hey, guys, because of all those reasons and because we can have it now and it fits our needs, this company's really the only one, uh, you know, it's kind of sole source because they made it specific for us. We can either, one, vote and say, hey, no, we're gonna send it back, and then we're gonna step back and send it out for this to be quotes, because it's under, it's under a hundred and fifty thousand, I think it's like ninety-two thousand. Or we can say, again, this is an exception to any requirement. We'd have to just go out for random quotes. We have this very specific solution to a bigger project that's already been approved and underway for a year now and authorize the utility company to pay for this tonight. So those would be your two options. I think Garrett has the exact price they're asking for.
Yeah, it, uh, it comes in at ninety thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Was there not a seven dollars, seven thousand dollars savings because we did not need the truck?
Right, we didn't go, yeah. Yes, yeah, cuz, um-
Reason you ordered the truck that you did, you can switch this unit in and out.
Correct. So, yeah, so the, the truck that we ordered will be, can be a dump truck, or it can have a flatbed that this will be fitting on, and we can just pull right up on the truck and, and go on with, you know.
As Mr. Wilton stated, we did talk about on eleven, five, or twenty-four, about just doing the arm. But that is if we took the big VAC truck with us, and we thought that would be an issue if it was being utilized somewhere else or being another vehicle in the road.
In the road, correct.
This could be all compact and be as one unit.
Yeah, just one truck.
Okay.
Uh, what, what do we call this piece of equipment?
Valve exerciser.
That's what I thought. Valve exerciser arm, or just valve exerciser?
Valve exerciser. This, this is a whole self-contained unit. Right, it's got an arm, it's got a, a, a back, back seg, water tank.
It just goes onto a flatbed.
Yes, yes.
And this will be part of implementing a maintenance program for all of those valves, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah. Planning on right now doing like downtown one year and then on top of the hill the, the next year, and alternating back and forth every other year.
When we spoke on that, you even said that it would count the number of turns and it will tell you-
What size?
What line you have in the ground, what a number of turns.
Yep, yep.
Are you familiar with this stuff, Mr. Schneider?
The exerciser, the exerciser? Yeah, I, I don't know the specific piece of equipment, but I'm familiar with it.
I know this, this was done before you come on office, but I don't know how.
I'd also just like to say thank you to you and your team, because I know that you allowed a few of us council members to come out and witness this as well. I think it'll be a great asset to our utility, so.
The thing I didn't like is there was no coffee or donuts.
You seen my budget.
Well, you didn't get no coffee or donuts cuz none of you's offered to help. I'm just saying.
You're right.
Well, Lenny, Lenny didn't show up because he heard it was a valve exerciser.
I figured it had work involved, no? Had something going on, I couldn't get there. Yeah.
Just kidding, Lenny.
No, that's cool, wasn't it?
Anyway, okay.
That was mean.
So I'll, I'll put this in the form of a motion if you accept. A motion on the floor will be to approve, uh, an amount of not to exceed nine, ninety thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents for the new valve exerciser.
So moved.
And that, and just for the record, that's based on an exception to any quoting or bidding that we would have to do because of this. Again, unique opportunity for cost savings, time savings, and the fact that this was specifically designed by this one company for our needs.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Garrett.
Um, I got one other-
Did you bring up the other thing about water meter?
Yes, yes, I wanted to, all right, so a couple of years ago, we, um, our meter system, there, there's the water meter, and then there's a separate thing, it's called the ERT, Electronic Radio Transmitter, I believe is what it stands for. And that's what sends the signal out. A few years ago, um, they, we double ordered these ERTs, so we have an abundance of ERTs. There is a shelf life on these, there's a, they're battery operated. So the shelf life, the actual lifetime of them is ten years. So, um, we're almost two years into that mistake of ordering them. I have talked with a couple of salesmen, and I, I've found a company that's needing some that I think we can sell. We paid a hundred and five dollars each for them, but I think we can only get about sixty or sixty-five dollars out of them because of the shelf already being almost two years old and the depreciation of, of the, the battery. So I wanted to just throw that out there to what you guys, I mean, we, we can keep them, we're, there's too many of them, we would never use them in the ten years.
How many have we got?
Uh, a little over two hundred.
Do you think you can sell enough to make up for that valve exerciser?
I, no, I wish. I wish. But, uh, yeah, there, there's a couple hundred of them, and I think, uh, this first, initially, I think I can get rid of a hundred and sixty is what they're, they're asking for.
How much do we pay and how much are they offering?
Uh, a hundred and five, but they haven't offered anything yet. Um, they, they threw out there like fifty, and I told them I wouldn't even consider fifty, I would bring to you guys. I told the salesman, at least sixty to sixty-five dollars each, just trying to. And then, like I said, they might play hardball and say, no, we'll give fifty or whatever, so I just wanted to see what you guys had thought, but-
Longer we wait, less they're worth.
Correct, yeah. Every month, they're, they're going down.
Eventually gonna be worth nothing.
Yep.
Yeah, I get that.
I'd say. Get what we can get out of it.
I had a procurement person for that, so we went and double ordered.
I mean, Dale, what do you think, would it be best to, uh, put it out there to advertise to see, you know, for a week or whatever, to see what we can get out of them, and that way you're at least getting the highest bid?
Good point, you.
Or-
Yeah, I think, uh, to give you guys, and this, and I apologize that we were prepared for this one, but off the top of my head, I would say that two options, one would be something along those lines. But I think that, if memory serves, we can declare these to be, um, kind of dead inventory, which would be, so if they're not usable, then it's, uh, inventory that we are considering to be-
Obsolete.
Obsolete, and then we can sell it for any price. So I would just ask that this, if you do vote to sell this for, and then still you would say not to go under sixty dollars and try to, as you can, if that's probably made on YouTube, but, um, you know, anything between, they got to sell for sixty or more, and then authorize them to sell a whole lot as obsolete inventory. I'd feel comfortable with that if we cut that in the vote, and, or like Mr. Fettie said, we can, we can put it in the paper. Or third option, the most traditional option is to auction, we have surplus inventory, but if it's, if it's unusable, then it's-
Right. And, and the thing with these ERTs is it's kind of a specific thing. So, I mean, if we got somebody coming, I mean, it's hard telling if, who else we could get that's coming, this is not, everybody's gonna need these. And there just happens to be one company that's changing out a bunch of them, a hundred and sixty of them, to be exact, to, um, that we can go. And then, of course, like I said, I'd like to be able to go ahead and give them the hundred and sixty and then still shop the rest of them, you know, there's a little over two hundred, so, um, to get rid of all of them, if I could.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say the next best option probably would be an auction of some sort, a municipal auction, but I'd say either one of those are fine.
Is that gonna allow him the opportunity to take advantage of the offer he's already been?
No, obviously, you can do either one. Obviously, if we've got an offer on the table and you guys wanna do that, as long as we put into the minutes that this is obsolete inventory, then I would, uh, stay behind that as an exception to our, we're kind of reverse procurement, now we're talking about selling inventory. Or if you felt more comfortable saying, let's tee it up at an auction, either one of those would be okay.
I'd make a motion-
A burden of hands better than a burden of bush.
Uh, uh, well, I would make a motion to allow Garrett to sell these as obsolete inventory, um, to go ahead and move forward on the offer that he has at this point, and then whatever's left over, move forward with an auction.
I'll second that.
With, well, also, let me add to that, also with a do not go under number of sixty dollars.
I, I was looking for the word, the reserve.
Hey, the motion, motion, okay, go ahead.
If you can get more, get more.
Yeah.
Then you better make the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, if you want sixty-five, cuz he's watching us.
Fine. With a reserve of sixty-five bucks.
For you.
The motion on the floor is to, uh, declare these hundred and sixty units as obsolete inventory, and we'll sell them with a, a reserve of sixty-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And just add to that, sorry, real quickly, so even at, so two hundred and eighty, at a hundred and five dollars, it's about twenty thousand dollars. So that, to reverse our public purchasing statutes, that's under, you know, fifty thousand dollar threshold we're applying it, so we're also able to establish our local, our own local rules for something of value of that nature, so we have all three.
Cool, thank you.
Mr. Gavin, oh, you, you think it's, they're comfortable with sixty-five?
I'm, I'm hoping, yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll see, like I said, we'll throw it out there and-
Next meeting.
Right, if they, right, if they-
Well, I mean, how long, we got, how long is this opportunity gonna be there? That's what I'm asking.
Right, I mean, it, you know, I don't know. Like I said, they're wanting them, they're wanting them pretty quick, and, so, I mean, still, right, I mean, it's forty dollars savings. I mean, yeah, they're, I mean, they're just two years old, so I would feel, I feel comfortable with sixty-five.
Okay, thank you, Garrett.
Yep, thank you.
Any other add-ons?
Uh, I actually did have one thing, going back to the truck. Um, we wanted to, to follow up with that and ask permission for that old truck to be auctioned off, uh, the existing truck.
Are you gonna auction it off on indiana.gov, or how are we gonna do it?
Uh, yeah, on gov, gov deals, I guess Rodney would take care of that.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
We're gonna auction it without an engine?
I'll make the motion to do so, Mayor.
Okay, and, uh, who wants a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Are we auctioning it off-
Sell that bad.
-without an engine? If the engine's bad, I mean.
It's okay.
It's, if it runs, it's just not-
As is?
As is.
They'll be aware of it.
Yeah.
As is.
As is.
Any other add-ons?
Please, please, Dale.
If not, entertain a motion to, uh, review and discuss the claims for board approval.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next meeting, I'd like to call to order, City Lawrenceburg Council meeting for November 3rd, 2025. Everyone could stand for the pledge, please.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mr. Fettie.
All right, Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Rillit.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Von Duren.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, order reports, uh, streets, aisles, and curbs downtown. Mr. Abbott.
Everything's looking good.
Right up on the hill there, Mr. Fryman.
Looks pretty good. Thank you.
The, uh, speed tables are in, I believe?
They are, and they are nice.
Okay, you're not speeding over them, are you?
Not me. That's why they're nice.
Lenny dropped out of the transmission in his car going over.
I don't doubt it.
Yeah. Finance Department, Mr. Von Duren.
Nothing, sir.
What about, uh, parks and playgrounds, Mr. Little?
Oh, good.
Mayor, there's one thing I'd like to bring on, up in parks and playgrounds real quick. They redid, Drake redid the, the Center Street Park with new shrubs and whatnot, cutting the outside firm.
Not the park.
The round park.
Yeah, the round park.
At the Center Street round park?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Some of those bushes look like they're dying.
Yeah, there's, there's a warranty on it.
Okay, so all I need to know.
The same with the, uh, the grass.
Okay, gotcha.
They're gonna recheck everything in the mo, in, in the March. I say March, but in the-
Gotcha. So we do have a warranty, so if they do end up dying, you'll then replace it. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Certainly looks a lot better on it.
Yes, it does.
Uh, Muck, Stacy Mucker helped out with some of that as well, so.
Cutting it out and that.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and Fire Department, Mr. Olet.
Um, nothing to report, but we did receive our report from the new fire chief, Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, he did.
He put that down, so.
Was he late?
Eh, no. He was a little late. I did say something, but how'd you?
I figured you would.
Yeah, okay, I really did.
He was on time, but a little late.
Mayor, one more thing. Sorry, I should have brought this up under parks and playgrounds. Um, could you give us an update on Speedway with the lights and stuff?
Yeah, we're, uh, actually, it's gonna be up to you guys whether or not we go forward. Eric Web, well, Eric's not here. Uh, Eric's been getting, getting the, the dollar amount put together to see what it would cost to change that out to LED.
Okay.
Uh, I know you guys had a, a, some kind of an appetite for maybe looking at that. We're waiting on the final figures back from, I think it's Musco, if I'm not mistaken, Rob.
Well, the, the thing is with that, of course, we've talked a little bit about up here, too, is, um, that, that's gonna definitely exceed the one fifty. So it's one of those things where we probably, if we're gonna be serious about that and do it, you're gonna have to put it out for bid and everything else. So you, you need to make some decisions quick on that, whether you wanna put it out there for bid. My thought would be make a motion tonight and get it out there for bid.
Yeah.
And, once the bids come in, then you can kind of go from there, but, um-
I, I was gonna say-
It's definitely gonna be over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and plus, we said we wanted to have it going before next season.
That's what I'm saying, so you run out of time, plus, you know. Yeah, so it's-
Didn't he want to add something else?
Capacitor.
Capacitors.
Capacitors. That's another hundred and fifty thousand. That is something, I told him to create it, just two separate things.
Okay.
Okay.
Capacitor will help us a little more than it would help the promoter. But it will help. But I took it to, that was before Rob came on, but I told him to go after it as two different, separate.
Sounds good. Should I bring that up under old business, then?
Well, why don't you just go ahead and ask for us to go ahead and-
Put it out for bid.
Do it right now.
I'll make a motion that we go out for bid for the capacitors and LED lights for the Speedway, then.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rob, can you talk to Eric and see where he's at with that? And we're going to have to go, get a formal quote.
Yeah, I think he's got, I think he's got all the bids. It's basically, he's just going to have to go back to those people and tell them these are going to be sealed bids.
Yeah.
Yep.
Make sure he gets with Dell, he can figure it out.
And then we got to advertise it in the paper.
He's out all this week, just saying that, so it'll be next week.
Yeah, but sooner, time to sort of, of the essence, because we'd like to get this done before next season, if we can. If we can, I think.
And then also, one more question, Mr. Fettie, where would we pull that money from? Do you have an idea?
Um, we, we would, like I said, if you guys have the appetite for it, not in the budget for next year, but we would have to do an additional beginning of the year for that.
All right, we'll get together with you.
So we could, we definitely got the money, it's just we just didn't put it into the budget, so.
Sounds good.
We just have to wait and do an additional, like in January or February.
Which is not a problem, we've done that before.
Appreciate it.
Okay, good, good item. All right. All right, I have no other announcements. Anyone got any other announcements for?
Maybe on the same pace with the streets and alleys downtown, Mr. Cook sent me a text after the last meeting. They're starting, they've got the, they're going to strip the speed tables by the schools that are all, kind of lined pretty goofy. And then the signage on the ground will match the arrows for our new, the new speed tables.
Yes, yeah.
So they will no longer look like a crosswalk.
They're going to look, yeah, it won't be so confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want people using the crosswalks.
While we're on the subject, the speed bump up there where we had a water leak up on Bel Air, did they fix that, the marrows and stuff, or do you guys know?
Did it fix the speed table?
Yeah, well, what it was, it, what, it had a water line, main bus up there.
In the yard.
So they fixed it. And then I think they went through with the scrubber, you know, to clean the mud and stuff. And I think they pulled some of the, I don't think, it wasn't paint. What is it, they used some kind of?
Silicone.
Yeah, and they, they put this down and it kind of folded it up and moved it and they were going to replace it.
Ask Mr. Cook about it.
Yeah.
He'll get on that. Okay, anything else? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we had a October sixth work session I'd like to get approval for.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then an October twenty-seventh work session, I'd get, all right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Under new business, Victoria, we got O O, the O O R bid opening. You and Judy.
We got Jessica Rayburn tonight. I believe everyone has a bid tab, tabulation sheet, too, if needed. So, the first one is for Stalen Construction is the contractor. The first address is five three three Front Street, and his total is fifteen thousand one hundred.
Okay.
The next address is thirty-five Village Drive, and his total is nine thousand one hundred. And then the last one is three six five Elm Street, and his total is thirty-two thousand five hundred.
Okay. Who is that, what contractor?
Um, Stalen Construction, Mike Stalen.
How many bids did we get?
We had three.
Good.
It's going to be easier to strip this one.
As you can tell, these weren't open beforehand.
He wanted to make sure no one got his bids out.
They're sealed.
The next contractor is Jackson Construction, and his, his first bid is for five three three Front Street, and his total is fourteen thousand one eighty-five. The next address is three six five Elm Street, and his total is twenty-four thousand four hundred. And the last one is thirty-five Village Drive for eight thousand twenty dollars.
All right.
That's why they were sealed so tight.
Yeah.
That's why they were sealed so tight.
Yeah. He didn't want anybody to know what his bids were.
Oh, that's one sealed up.
Yeah.
That one's easier to get into.
Yeah.
The last one is Jeddah.
Who is it?
Jeddah.
Jeddah?
Yeah.
They make Volkswagen.
So his-
That's what I was going to say.
His first address is five three three Front Street, and it is for thirteen thousand fifty. And then his next one is thirty-five Village Drive, and it is for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty. Looks like he only gave a bid for the two addresses, he did not bid on the last one.
Is that a requirement when you ask for them, that they have to bid on all of them, or not?
They don't have to, they're welcome to bid on which ones they're comfortable with or which ones they prefer. So they don't have to, they can choose which to bid on or which not to. And then also, I gave you just an updated sheet with the homes. This should be our last round of bids that, well, the program has to be completed by February with all the construction work. But as far as placing homes out to bid, this meets our requirement of how many homes were put in the application. We actually, I think, had one or two additional, and this should use the remainder amount of the grant funds.
So what I'm looking at, twenty-two homes?
Yeah, and it was-
That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, we had it, in the grant, it was to do twenty.
So you guys did all year last, this fashion.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Approved that money for this.
I think we give Judy kudos on this, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wish all of our communities had a Judy. She's definitely been very helpful, and it's nice having someone on the ground here in the community that the homeowners kind of know more. I mean, because our office is in Brucell, so having someone in the community that they can communicate to has been great. Thank you.
You've done a great job, Judy.
If there's no other questions, can I take this under advisement to take back to our office and review to make sure everything's correct? And then we'll go with the lowest, most responsive bidder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, just, you might want to make a motion in a second, yeah.
Our, our motion on the floor would be take those under advisement and let them make the decision on who is the most responsible bidder.
Second.
Second that.
Second. By Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let me ask the question, is this going to go on next year, too, or is this just?
Don't know yet.
One-time deal, or you got to wait and see?
So, right now, it's my understanding there is, it's about a year process to even apply. So if it's something that Lawrenceburg's interested again, the best bet would be reach out to Victoria and start getting in the works for that. So next year, I'm going to guess is probably not as doable, but maybe the following year, just because of the prerequisites to gather your information and have your public engagement meetings and everything.
Yeah, I've got some people that was asking me about this, and I know that it was too late this year. And that's good to know.
If you have a waiting list, if you want to, if they want to give me a call, I can add them to the waiting list.
Okay, I appreciate it, Judy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the list, you'll see the donation commission, committee recommendations. Any questions on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all the new business I have. Old business, I'd like to, a motion to table the Tanner's Creek permit application. I get a motion to table?
I did, I want to just ask the question.
They actually asked us to table it, and our, so ELT asked us to table it. We told them that we would, that would be our request today, that's why I'm out here today. And we also have Atlas working really hard on the information they were able to obtain. They also need further time, so it's good for everybody. We'll plan on having them here the next meeting in November. And in the meantime, as soon as Atlas gets their information, I'm going to get it to you however best. If, if we can squeeze in a work session, great. If not, we'll just do it live at the meeting in two weeks.
Now, how much is this survey that we're, that they're doing for Atlas, as you say? How much is it costing, is it going to cost us more money?
Atlas is our third-party, environmental consulting team, and we are in deep pain under this.
And the only reason I'm asking this, I know how I, I mean, we can't vote tonight, correct?
Sure you can, we could.
But I would make, I'd like to make a motion.
You can vote.
If they asked us to table it, I mean-
Well, yeah, but, I mean, we're talking more money that, that I don't want them digging. I, I don't want to, I don't want to do any of this. And I would recommend if we just voted down instead of throwing any more money.
What are you voting down?
That we do not let them take and dig the dirt from over there at their, their property toward our offway area.
Turning down the permit?
Right.
To, to take dirt from the existing property.
Yes.
Well, and, and-
And bring it from somewhere else.
And if I could, obviously, you guys can do it everywhere. It's, it's your city. But what, the only request I would make is that we do bring this back at the meeting two weeks from now. And the only reason I'm making that request, like you guys have worked really hard on this, and I appreciate you, and you've let me do the work with Atlas, do the work with ELT, do the work with John Johnson, all this. I mean, in many ways, we've been working on this for ten years, right?
Right.
Property over there. But because they've applied for a permit, an excavation permit with our city engineering department, I just want to be able to formally review it, discuss it, and vote on it. And I would rather have them present and Atlas present to establish our factual basis. And then you can vote however you like. And you, you're right, Lenny, I mean, you called me the other day, you're working hard, you went over there with Austin on Friday in person. So I appreciate that, I appreciate all you guys. But just to protect the city and protect ELT and protect everyone and to be fair to everyone and most of our citizens, I'd rather just have that meeting in two weeks, so we have all the facts, and then vote if that's okay. But you don't have to, that's just my two cents.
Well, and also, I agree with Dell, we want to give them a fair application process. Otherwise, I mean, there's other-
Otherwise, why, why do we have a process?
Yeah, and, you know, go from there. I, I hear what you're saying, Lenny, I just-
I'm just saying that this has went on for a while.
Yes, sir.
And we know what's, what they're wanting to do.
Yeah, and I, look, I think many of us-
That's me, that's me, you know.
But the last meeting, we agreed to have Atlas look at the, the information.
I agree.
And we have not heard back from Atlas, so I think we owe it to that.
So basically-
I just didn't want to throw any more money.
Basically, Lenny, we need all our ducks in a row before we vote on it. That's okay. I mean, that's what I would recommend.
Yeah, I mean, hey.
So with that said, can I, can I get a motion to table it?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Lenny Fryman.
Nay.
Uh, Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Yay.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Yeah.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette.
Yay.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yeah.
All right, it passes four to one. We will table it until the November seventeenth meeting.
And again, Lenny, thank you for your, thanks for going over there and letting me go ahead.
Yep. All right, any other old business? What about comments from the audience? How about if I ask for a motion to review and discuss the claims for board, board approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, Mayor, before we move on from there, I held up a claim at the last meeting. It was from a Fagory drinker.
Yes.
And there was another one from Reedy Financial. I'm comfortable with moving forward with the invoice from Fagory. It's voucher number three eight zero nine. Most of my questions have been answered after reviewing it. So if the other council members are okay with that, I am fine with-
What's your number on that?
It is voucher number three eight zero nine.
Three eight zero nine, okay.
And then the one, the Reedy one, I am not comfortable with moving forward with, that is voucher number three eight nine zero. I would like to ask that we request additional information. A lot of it has to do with the Riverfront Development, and it's saying preliminary engagement and analysis on different things. I would like to see some of that work product just to verify that it actually happened.
Okay. Mark can request that from them.
Yeah, I, we can-
We'll get it.
Like I said, we, we got, we got some detailed invoices, but it's, just like it says, it's-
Yeah, it's analysis.
It's not, it's just analyze this, analyze that, done that.
And my thing is, I'm curious how, you know, they did bond.
Well, my, my only, my only concern is, is that contract was approved by the Board of Works. And basically, in the contract, you know, they did the work that, part of the work that was in the contract, the contract was approved back in twenty-three. So at the end of the day, you guys can do what you want, but at the end of the day, the Board of Works approved that contract. So it don't matter to me. I can, I can try to get more information if that's what you guys want, or if you guys can make somebody else make a motion to, to approve it, however you want to do it, doesn't matter to me.
I'd like to wait to approve it until we get more information, personally speaking.
Well, I don't think you're going to get any more information than what we got.
I'm not sure.
I, I, I had requested-
Yeah, because the mayor, the mayor wasn't happy with it to begin with. And he, basically, they, they did quite a bit of work to get to the detailed information that we have.
And, uh-
So if you're-
But I, I did look back, if you, if, the only other bond that I've ever been a part of, and we went and we did, was the Civic Park. The normal procedure for doing that is X number of dollars is paid on the front end of getting the bonds. Bonds are not, not cheap, right? The, the, the work for getting the bonds is not cheap, let's put it that way. And then the remainder was paid after all of the work was done and the bond was issued, I believe. So I, 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 I responded back as soon as I got that claim or that invoice, because I, I wanted some explanation.
Yeah, that's how I am. I just have a hard time understanding how they did this bond work without knowing what the final number is going to be.